That go with it. Um, and um, job um, uh, right out of college, I was a City Year core member in AmeriCorps program. If you don't know City Year, um, and my three words for that would be um, love, passion and empathy.
Thank you, Brian. You want to pass to somebody in the group?
Sure, pass to Dave.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, Dave Scott, Manager of Work Solutions. Uh, I would say as perspective on work, perspective on people, creative life approaches. Those are the three words. Great. Uh, I will pass to Jody.
Excellent. Hi, uh, so I'm Jody Sturgeon. I'm the President of PHI. PHI works to improve the quality of uh, direct care jobs in long-term care specifically. So home health aides, personal care aides and nursing assistants. Um, with the belief that that also improves the quality of care for uh, older adults and people with disabilities. So I think my uh, my I got my undergraduate degree uh, at night while I worked full-time. And when I worked full-time during that period, it was in direct care. Um, and so uh, while I did not start my career believing that I would be in the long-term care space, um, I, here I am. Uh, and so I draw on my experience as a, as a very young person thrust into a job that I was like dramatically unprepared for frankly. Um, and so there are moments where I, I can completely relate to this challenges of the, of the workforce that we're working to support today. Um, and I will pass to um, Dwayne.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, hope all is well. My name is Dwayne Brown. I'm the Deputy Executive Director of Workforce and Education for Phipps Neighborhoods. Um, ironically, my first job actually, well, it's really my second job because my first job was a baby boy. But my, my second job was uh, as a S Y P participant, a summer youth employment uh, uh, participant. And I worked uh, which is funny to me at All Lady of Mercy, on two thirty there, which is now um, Montefiore. And Montefiore, you know, I, Phipps, we, we partnered with Montefiore on one of our um, uh, flagship workforce program called Career Network Healthcare. And so it's almost like full circle to me. Um, and that experience really taught me, taught me about service to others. I think it really reaffirmed my um, my desire to help other people out. Um, and all I was doing was really, um, I was a food transport for uh, specialists. So really just loading up the lunches for all the, the patients. Um, but it got, got me a chance to get, go around the hospital and seeing all the different um, um, departments and things of that nature. So I was extremely uh, excited about that. And so um, thank you for that. And I'm going to pass the mic on to um, let's go Larry, Larry, my guy Larry from Saint Nick's.
Larry, we can't hear you. Oh. Someone want to go while Larry tries to figure out his uh, Tara? Can we tag you in?
Sure. Hi, my name is Tara Gilbert. I work um, at Tribe over in East Harlem. I am the Director of Business Development. Um, sorry for the lighting. I'm in Florida and today is just not a sunny day today. Um, so I had my first job was out of high school and it was working for a bank as a teller. I subsequently worked my way up to bank manager. But I find that working in that field gave me a lot of um, really good information and good understanding of money and finances that I in turn um, kind of relate to the community that we serve today in our financial um, education courses as well. So there, there's always a reason and a purpose people are in positions. Oh, I need to popcorn it to somebody, right? Um, so I would like to popcorn it to, am I saying this right, Nisha?
That's right. Thanks.
Alright.
Hi, I'm good morning. My name is Nisha Zimki. I'm an Associate Dean in Academic Affairs at Gutman Community College, which is part of the City University of New York. Um, my first job that um, comes to mind is really started as an internship and then went to a the first position as a teacher's aide in an ESL class at a community center. And um, I was trying to think of, it, it really, I mean, I never left education after that. So it certainly had an influence on my, my career from there. Um, and I would say the three words that come to mind are joyful, complex and rewarding. Um, it was uh, really just taught me a ton about what it takes to be a good teacher and also just about the community that I was working in there. Alright, and I will pass it to Damian.
Hello everyone. Uh, my name is Damian Samuels. I'm the Associate Vice President for Youth Services at Goddard Riverside, which includes Isaac's portfolio now. I think uh, I, I often ask this question as I was breaker. I often, I think uh, my first job was, was P A L Summer Camp Counselor uh, in New Haven, Connecticut. But the job that I think was most influential was I worked at Popeyes at fourteen years old. Um, and which was illegal. And they, that, that restaurant in the neighborhood allowed us to work pretty much as long as we wanted. And I worked pretty much to closing to like twelve thirty, fourteen years old. Uh, and the, the point of that was it was really about hard work. I wanted to work. My family was poor. They let me work as many hours. So the words that I, I remember are just uh, commitment, fastidiousness and sacrifice. Uh, so those are my words. And I, uh, can we pop it back to Larry?
Larry, you muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Technical difficulties every day. Um, so Larry Rothschild, Director of Workforce Development at Saint Nick's Alliance. Um, and uh, we, we do uh, P C T and Home Health Aids C N A training here. And back to my, my first job, I, I did a lot of retail. I started out at Caldor like way back and, and that really, the customer service aspect has really played into everything that I've done and helped really like shaped, you know, our focus in all of our programs and, and my work. And, and I think that customer service is really important in healthcare and everything that we do.
Yeah. I think um, Marjorie's in transit, so I think we've all gone. Um, and thank you, everyone. I, you know, it's, I, I do have this conversation a lot in, in Icebreakers is because we're in workforce development and it, it always um, sort of strikes me that a, a lot of people do start with service-related jobs and we're low-wage and working younger probably than is now legal and uh, learned lots of great things from that, right? Adaptability and persistence for sure. Um, so thank you. Uh, let me get the screen back up here. And um, we see this every meeting, go over norms for working together. I think it's important and that's why we take the time to do it. And you know, just overview, like just be as present as you possibly can. Um, ask for what you need, just either unmute or raise your hand, chime in. Um, if you want to use Zoom reactions, we'll, we'll keep an eye out for those. And this is a safe space and we will make space for your questions and time for processing. And let me move on. So for today, our objectives, I'm going to go through these quickly because we have um, Brian doing a, a big data presentation. So I won't read them. You can see them. They're on a participant agenda. Dave or Megan, if you could drop the link to the participant agenda in chat and folks will have that handy if they need it. Um, in our previous meeting, we also touched on this last time. We've so far been discussing as a network together, we want to consider improving entry-level jobs. Um, that means a lot, but I'll leave it there for now. Complement each other's training, services, curriculum, make cross-network referrals. Uh, partner for career pathways and advancement strategy, possibly a marketing campaign for the sector, sharing best practices to connect with better quality jobs and employers and also consider a policy agenda, which uh, connects to the, the job quality conversation we've been having. And I will pass it over to my colleague Megan, so you all could get to know her and she could get to know you.
Hello again, everybody. Uh, I'm not sure who joined after I introduced myself, so I'll say it again. Um, I'm Megan Marshall. I'm the new Associate of Work Solutions at Jobs First NYC. And we just wanted to take a couple of moments uh, to leave an open floor for all of you to chime in and share any key highlights or updates you may have regarding your, you know, daily work insights, revelations, whatever that may be. And the purpose of this is to share these highlights and updates with one another to get into the habit of collaborating and having open conversation. So we can maintain that throughout the process of developing a network. Um, you know, keeping in the loop and up to date with everybody's work thoughts and ideas is really critical to a successful network. Um, and through this sharing, we can celebrate some wins or we can integrate some of these updates into the work that we're going to do in future sessions. So that's kind of the purpose behind why we want to hear from you about any relevant updates. So any updates for me, something you'd like me to know about your work, who you are or I hope you have for the network or any other healthcare training-related updates or highlights you've come across since the last meeting? Um, if you'd like to share, just please come off mute, share your name and organization. It'll be helpful to me as a newcomer. Um, and share your quick highlight if you have. I'd love to hear from at least one or two people. If you would, so please.
Uh, I'm sure we uh, at the Isaac Center, we relaunched our successful partnership with the New Jewish Home. Uh, we had worked with them since twenty fourteen. Um, in twenty twenty, uh, we shifted focus a little bit when we won the advanced earned contract. Uh, but in light of some funding opportunities and funding support from New York Presbyterian, uh, we, we launched our uh, relationship with New Jewish Home uh, to produce C N As. We used to work on both C N A and H H A, but we've dropped H H A. Uh, and so uh, very pleased that I think we've got a, the right mix now. We had our first uh, classes, we had two classes, we had zero percent attrition. Uh, so our first class was twenty-six students and twenty-six graduated. And our second class graduated last week with seventeen students and all seventeen graduated. Uh, and it's very strict in terms of it can't be late, you can't be absent. And, and so very pleased to see, I think we've, we've tweaked it to the point where um, we've got something good going. That first class of twenty-six students have now graduated. They've earned their C N A and they are getting work. So uh, very exciting to happen.
Wow, thank you. That sounds very exciting. There is a few wins in there. I heard some new funding, relaunching a partnership, a lot of students going through your program successfully. Those are huge wins and I think that we can all share things like that and learn from one another too. So thank you. Anybody else want to share a update or highlight?
I'm sure I can give a couple, I think. Um, so Jody Sturgeon from PHI. Again, we work with uh, the direct care workforce training and policy and I would see. Um, so in that light, um, I would, I would highlight the increased wages or home care workers um, that are in the governor's budget, um, while not the fair pay that we had hoped for. It's still progress. Um, so that's definitely a highlight for us. I think we recently had our uh, hybrid H H A training approved by D O H. And so we'll be rolling out that training. So it's a mix of, of uh, instructor-led online and, and in-person demonstration training. So really anxious to see how that plays out and the, you know, the impact of, of COVID and the proliferation of online training is, you know, on one hand positive and on another really challenging um, to me for given our learners and the support that they need. So I think that's a really big um, uh, area for us right now. I would say too that the, you know, we are working um, deeply across states, but certainly in New York around influencing the federal money that's flowing to the states around workforce recruitment and retention. Um, and then um, uh, the last thing I would say is just my sense, and I'm sure this is true for others on the, on the call, is that there's at least um, some indications of recovery for, for our employers, you know, um, numbers are up. You know, it being recruitment's better. It's not where we need it to be. Um, but so those are the things that are sort of top of mind for me in terms of our, our workforce right now.
Thank you. I also appreciate that last uh, jolt of hope because it's nice to be like, okay, things might, we might be in the weeds here, but there is some good on the horizon. I think that's always really important to integrate. Um, and I'd love to keep, I'd love for you to keep us in the loop about the hybrid training and how that's going and challenges you face and how you overcome. I'd love to hear about that too as you move forward. Um, and I think we're also going to touch a little bit on the increased wages that you mentioned. Um, I don't want to step on Brian's toes too much. Um, I was going to have Dave or Brian chime in, but I think it's in part of his presentation. So to save some time, I will give it over to Brian unless anybody else had a burning update or highlight they must share with me.
I do have one thing that I want to share. Um, again, Dwayne Brown, Phipps Neighborhoods. Um, what, what I see now, we're using the model that we have developed for our healthcare program um, to, to actually build out our other opportunities uh, in workforce. So we, we're taking this idea of, you know, you, you know, the Holy Trinity of having a, a good provider, a, a, a institutional, institution of higher education in which we have hostels, a partnership with hostels and then the anchor employer in Montefiore. And now we have New York Presbyterian, we have two anchor employers. Um, and we're taking that model and the way we designed it, now we're launching it to build them services. So I'm just seeing, I, 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 I love the work that's happening in this field and I, and I, it continues to show that we can use the things that are working here to, to, to grow in other areas. And so that's something that I'm just really proud of. Um, and even being a part of this uh, community.
Awesome. Thank you. That sounds like well-deserved of, of pride. And it's nice to hear when you have a model that works, that you can kind of plug and play essentially, if you will, into your next thing, because then you kind of have a template and we can share those templates together to improve work, resource sharing, whatever it may be. So that's really, really helpful for me to hear too, especially as a newcomer. So thank you. I appreciate that. Brian, I will finally pass it on to you unless any of my other colleagues had something that they would like to share.
Now, just applauding everyone. Um, lots of, lots of good stuff there. Thank you for sharing.
Um, hi, everyone. Uh, I'm Brian Shelley. I'm from uh, Chumara Economics and Analytics. Um, Chumara is a lot of different things. Um, we're a software provider uh, that provides a lot of the labor market data that you're going to see here today. Um, and that's really what, you know, first and foremost, what we think of ourselves are as data people, as labor market data people. And so I'm very excited to be here to share um, some of the trends that we're seeing in the healthcare industry in general across um, all industries to a certain extent. Um, we'll cover that. We'll cover some out-of-school, out-of-work youth, uh, out-of-school, out-of-work. Yeah, easy for me to say, youth stuff. Um, and um, yeah, we'll have a good time. Um, we will have time for questions at the end. Feel free to save them until then. You can put them in the chat and I'll get to them. Um, and um, you know, just wanted to reiterate, it's fun for us to talk to this group, right? Um, because you all are doing so much to get people back to work and that is one of the things we're passionate about here at Chumara. Um, you know, we do uh, a great bit of our business workforce solutions providers and, and they're just inspirational. And given that we've just, uh, we've just made the change and are projecting a recession for next year. Um, you know, workforce development organizations and the organizations that support them like Jobs First are going to be um, just critical. So let me share my screen. And let me get a PowerPoint up there. Alright, so the title of this is, can everybody see the full screen uh, presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so healthcare industry in New York City. Um, before we get into this, you know, you're all uh, pretty high-level operators. So you understand uh, a great deal about data and how to approach it, right? Um, but just a quick review for you, when we talk about labor market information, uh, we're talking about data and employment on the workforce. Um, and we are um, talking about, you know, demand and supply of workers. I know that there's sort of been a worker shortage recently. Is that going to continue? Um, typical requirements for the jobs. What are the skills and credentials that are necessary to get a job? Uh, characteristics of people working or not working and looking for work. Um, I would also include in there uh, people who are not looking um, and not working right now. Um, but maybe have been discouraged from the labor market. Um, and so there's all kinds of information we can bring. Um, bring to the table, we can bring numbers, we can bring words and we can bring people, alright? Uh, numbers, what are the sort of, some of the numbers that you're going to hear about in this presentation? And this presentation will be pretty heavy on the numbers. Um, and, and I'm counting on you guys to bring the, the other stuff into the uh, the presentation. So we get a lot of our numbers from the census. We get it from the Bureau of Labor, Labor Statistics. Uh, we have job postings data. We pull in job posts, about a million of them each night. Um, and we can look at and report on the aggregate trends of those. And there's in numbers on everything from industries, occupations, wages, unemployment, demographics, um, all those things. Um, the nice thing about our job posting data is that it gives us real-time intelligence, right? And what's so important about that is let's take wage data for information. For example, wage data usually lags. Um, you know, at least a year behind the market, uh, behind the, behind the present day. And if you think about what's been happening to wages in the last year, it's a little bit tricky to rely on ol- on older wage data. Um, because there's been such an inflation in everything, including salaries and, and hourly wages. And so the nice thing about job posting data is it gives you what is happening today or I should say more accurately, what is happening yesterday, right? It's the most up-to-date information you can get on who is hiring, for which positions they are hiring, how much pay, educational requirements, necessary skills and certification. Um, words uh, make up a valuable part of labor market information. Industry association pub- publications, um, private reports from three institutes uh, that I'm sure that you know better than I, I do. Uh, business sections like the New York Times and Wall Street Journal, we read those every day at Chumara and they greatly influence what we do, what we forecast and everything. Um, this is the most important slide, I think, right? Is people. People who are dealing directly with employers or um, dealing directly with workforce organizations, what you know is at least as important as what the data can tell us, right? Um, what can you tell us? Um, you can tell us the things that numbers don't capture, right? Like when a company is going to expand uh, and hasn't started hiring yet. Um, when uh, there are employers that have training pipelines that don't post jobs on uh, online. Um, uh, that certain companies place a huge emphasis on two or three different skills, right? And so I would say when you're thinking about this presentation and what I always tell people about looking for data. So when you see a number that doesn't match your intuition, ask yourself, does this data miss the point? Is there something about the, the reality that data is not capturing? Or do I need to give this issue a rethink, right? Is it something, is this data challenging my assumptions? Um, and so with that, let's get into some of the data. And I'm moving quickly through these sections because I want to get to the healthcare part. Certainly willing to talk about more of them in the discussion, right? So let's talk about out-of-school, out-of-work New York City residents. Um, we have a special focus here on um, uh, young people ages eighteen to twenty-four who are out of school, out of work. Um, and so what you see here is that kind of not surprisingly, um, older, old, older young adults tend to make up a larger portion of the, of the uh, young adult population that are out of school, out of work. In this case, twenty-three and twenty-four-year-olds make up about fifty-three percent of the uh, total number of young adults who are out of school, out of work. Um, no surprise, the residents of New York City, you could probably guess at this slide, um, the percent of eighteen to twenty-four young, young adults who are out of school, out of work uh, is highest in the Bronx. Um, it is high, you know, also high out in Brooklyn, less pronounced uh, in some of the other boroughs. In Manhattan, of course, it's very, it's very low. Um, this is an interesting slide. Um, uh, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds who are out of school, out of work, where are they concentrated? And again, probably no surprise, right? You see sort of a lot of areas up here in the Bronx, out in the east Brooklyn um, and, or east Queens rather, um, in different parts of Brooklyn, right? Um, and uh, in this case where you see purple, um, you have neighborhoods where the um, out-of-school, out-of-work youth is as high as thirty-four uh, over thirty-four percent. And that is, um, I think we can all agree that's too high and that, that's not great, right? Um, the ethnicity of um, of um, out-of-school, out-of-work, or excuse, excuse me, the racial uh, makeup, uh, racial and ethnic makeup in this case. Um, black young adults make up thirty percent of the total young adults uh, out-of-school, out-of-work population. Um, uh, Latinx um, increased to forty-four percent, right? And so the thing to understand about this slide and some of the subsequent ones is uh, especially uh, black people, yes, but Latinx people, eighteen to twenty-four-year-old make up a disproportionate share of the out-of-school, out-of-work population relative to their share of the, of the uh, total population in New York City. Um, by race, here you see some things. Um, again, Latinx and blacks are the most uh, are, are sort of have the highest rates of being out of school, out of work. Um, although those rates declined, I should say here that the most recent data that we have for a lot of this information is two thousand nineteen. Um, from what we've been able to see, obviously during two thousand twenty, you saw a spike. Um, you saw a spike to, um, I think it was something in June of two thousand twenty, thirty-four percent of uh, young adults were out of school, out of work in New York City. Um, that number has since come down and is starting to resemble some of these numbers, but is still higher than it was uh, pre-pandemic. Um, older people, um, uh, ages twenty-five to sixty-seven, well, our fifty-five to sixty-seven age bracket is, makes up the uh, highest uh, out-of-school, out-of-work population. And you know, due to retirements, uh, due to health issues, uh, you know, the things that you think about usually why uh, older people are not in the workforce or in school. Um, mirrors the borough results. Um, although Staten Island is uh, higher here. Um, up in the Bronx, it is still um, has the highest rates. Um, you can see the concentration here. It's a little bit more widespread. Um, and you, you know, in some people, you have um, um, as high as fifty, in some neighborhoods, you have the side, highest fifty percent um, people who are out of school, out of work, ages twenty-five to sixty-seven. Um, black adults, twenty-five to sixty-seven, made up twenty-six percent of the total um, uh, adult population not working or in school. Um, percent for Latinx remained thirty-one percent. Um, still over-representation of those two groups, but certainly the Latinx number is closer to its total makeup of the demographic population of, of the whole population of New York City. Um, you can see here by borough uh, and ethnicity, um, you can see that sort of um, high numbers uh, uh, in the Bronx of Latinx um, who are uh, out of school, out of work, um, twenty-five to sixty-seven. Um, blacks, blacks in Brooklyn and you can see the ethnic breakdown uh, other than that. Now, let's get to the meat of the presentation. I can slow down my talking a little bit here. So analysis of the healthcare sector. Uh, the healthcare industry is larger in New York City than it is uh, overall in the state uh, or in the country as a whole. So you can see here that uh, sixteen point three percent of the New York City uh, of occupations in New York City are healthcare uh, occupations, um, compared to fifteen point three percent in New York State and twelve point five percent in the United States. Um, and you can see here, not surprisingly, um, given those high numbers, that the growth rate of um, in New York City of the healthcare sector has been really um, quite high. Um, you can see here, so the ra- way to read this is that we standardize the United States. Um, um, the uh, state of New York and New York City at one hundred. Um, uh, standardized each of those in one hundred in two thousand one. And then we've seen the growth over the last twenty years. Well, you can see here, this black line is New York City and the way to read this, right? Is that currently the healthcare sector in terms of occupations, um, total number of people working in that sector has grown by about fifty-one, fifty-two percent uh, in the last twenty years and has recovered to a large extent from pre-pandemic levels. And you can see And you can see that that growth, not surprisingly, given the numbers we've seen thus far, is higher than that in New York and higher than that of the nation as a whole. Top health industries with the highest expected demand in the next five years in New York City. Three out of four average paying low wage. So here we're looking at home healthcare services, individual family services and childcare services, right? And you can see the wages associated with them here. Certainly, you know, we have some hospital people here, general medical and surgical hospitals are doing really well and paying great wages. It's important to note that this statement of low wages is a fact and not a judgment, right? Because we know that these jobs can't be valued just by the wages that they pay. They provide great entry rates, entry jobs for a lot of young people, including people who are working their way from schools, we got somebody on the line right here. And it provides sort of a great resume experience that you can put on there if you want to move into a job that pays a higher wage mid, mid-career. We're also optimistic for reasons we've already talked about, right? Which is that April twenty-two, twenty twenty-two legislations plan to increase the wages for home health aides by three dollars per hour over the next two years, right? Like we said, this is not perfect, but this is progress, right? And we have legislation and we have people like you who are working hard every day to boost these wages up. And given this success, particularly for home healthcare aides, I would expect these wages to trend upwards in the current, in the coming years. Let's talk about some sub industries within new, with, within the healthcare industry, right? So, social assistance is back on high, and here we're talking about services for the elderly, child daycare, vocational rehab, those types of things. Social assistance is back on a high growth path after a dip during the pandemic. And so you can see, and this, by the way, mirrors the trends for all occupations. We are not to where we are, we were pre pandemic as far as building up occupations back to where they were. But what we can see here is some strong recovery from the low point of the pandemic. And that, you know, depending on what happens with the recession and what that does to job growth, we'll see what happens with that, but, but recovery here in this sector looks about the same as recovery throughout the country for all jobs and all industries. Hospital employment is high and remained high during the pandemic. Obviously, those people were way too overworked and needed as much support as they could get in terms of new employees, right? Why is it starting to dip a little bit? Could be because COVID is waning, you know, which, which is sort of depends on the month, doesn't it, if COVID is waning, but overall rates are coming down. Is there burnout in the healthcare sector that's causing people to leave? That may account for the slight drop there, but again, this is a very healthy sector in New York. Here you start to see some of the effects of the pandemic that are lasting, right? So pre pandemic rates, we had about eighty-two, eighty, eighty-two, five hundred thousand people working in nursing and residential care. Look where we are now, right, close to eight thousand, nine thousand have left the workforce. Is this because of burnout? Is it because of high quick rates? You know, I don't think there is, you know, there may be less demand, right? A lot of this comes from the residential care side. You know, things like elderly communities where we, you know, a lot of us were trying to avoid those places and avoid maybe sending their parents to those places during the pandemic because they were sort of incubators of COVID or seen as incubators of COVID. And that we find accounts for a lot of the loss of jobs in this sector. Childcare is only partially recovered after a sharp decline during the pandemic. Again, during the pandemic, we expect that a lot of people wanted to keep their kids home away from the virus. And a lot of people had the ability to do that because they were out of work, right? Now, why is it only rebounded less than other industries? You know, a lot of people discovered, and we have a great chart we use in other presentations of exactly what the cost is in childcare and how much you need to earn as an hourly wage to make up for the cost of childcare. And particularly when we had stimulus funding floating around, a lot of people said, based on the jobs being offered, it's actually cheaper for me to forego childcare and not work. And so, and we also see here, participation rates are improving for ages fifty-five to sixty-seven. That is overall labor force participation rates. But those people are still not back in the economy the way they were pre pandemic. So do we have more grandparents at home caring for children rather than sending them to childcare? It's an interesting idea that we could explore a little more in the discussion. Analysis of healthcare occupations for all typical education requirements, okay? So, let's look at some demographics here, all right? The healthcare jobs in New York City generally resemble the population as a whole with regard to age, right? So you see here in New York City, about twenty-nine percent of the population is twenty-five to thirty-four year olds. And in the healthcare jobs in New York, in, in the city, we have twenty-five to thirty-four year olds making up twenty-eight point two percent. And you can just see if you compare this first and the third bar, age wise, the healthcare sector looks like New York City as a whole. This is less true when we get into racial dynamics here, right? You have far fewer white people as a share of the total healthcare jobs compared to all jobs in the, in the, in New York City. So thirty-nine point four percent of the people who work in healthcare jobs are white in New York City compared to fifty point eight percent of all jobs in New York City. It's disproportionately more black, right? So the healthcare sector is about thirty-four point seven percent made up of black people. That's compared to twenty-seven percent in the population of all jobs, right? So this sector is disproportionately more black than other sectors of the New York City economy. Somewhat surprisingly to me at least, right? Was that the Hispanic population is pretty well represented in healthcare jobs in New York City. So you can see that they, that Hispanics make up twenty-five point two percent of the total healthcare jobs in New York City compared to twenty-seven percent of all jobs. So again, pretty, you know, good representation, at least in being in these jobs. Are they in high paying jobs? That's all, that's a question, a different question entirely, right? Education and training requirements, what I'd like you to consider here is the difference between the United States and New York City. Healthcare jobs in the US versus healthcare jobs in New York. So what we see here is there are a lot more jobs in New York City compared to the nation that require very little experience, very short on the job training and no post-secondary award, right? In some cases, a GED is not even necessary or a high school diploma. That's that forty-two point eight percent in New York City compared to the twenty-four point two percent in the United States as a whole. The jobs in the healthcare sector are disproportionately low experience, require low training and consequently lower paying, right? Whereas you see in the United States as a whole, you have far more healthcare jobs, thirty-four point four percent that require a two-year degree or a certificate program compared to only twenty-three percent in New York City. So again, the healthcare jobs in, particularly the jobs that don't require college education. The education requirements for those jobs are less in New York City than they are in the United States as a whole.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Brian?
Yes, please.
Is that, are you factoring in, in those numbers? Volume, the number of jobs, or is that, is that just, I'm trying to understand as a, as an organization that works nationally, what I would say is that New York has higher standards at the entry level for the, and I'm only speaking to the jobs that we work in, right? But has, has a higher level of requirement than many of the other states in the country. So I'm just trying to, to figure out how to bring those two things together. So I know, working in other states, there are far less requirements for direct care workers than there are here in New York. And so I'm just trying to figure out those, those, those data points.
Yeah, so I, I think what we're seeing, right, is, you know, the formal requirements for things are one thing. But, but what this data is telling us, right, is as a percent of all jobs, forty-two point eight percent in our database are require short-term on-the-job training, no experience, no award, right? What other requirements there are in terms of skills requirements? And, you know, not necessarily certification, but, but I guess what we're seeing in the data is a little bit different than, than sort of what you're reporting here, which again goes back to that, is the data telling us the right thing or is the data misleading us? I'm not sure if I answered your question so much as avoided it, so.
No, I think we're saying the same thing. I think it's hard to parse, right? Because there's also just like the, the sheer volume of direct, say, like entry level jobs in healthcare in New York is, is bigger than anywhere other than maybe California. And so is that possibly skewing some of the data? So I think we're saying the same thing. I don't think.
Great, all right. What are the occupations that are expected to be the highest expected demand in the next five years in New York City? And also the nation, personal care aides, right? So personal care aides will be in great demand over the next five years. We project two point eight and two point seven percent growth, about the same in New York City and the nation, although obviously wages in New York City are a little higher due to cost of living. And you can kind of see here, right? The top four in both the United States and in the that in, in New York City are basically the same. What's going to be, where's there going to be the highest demand? Personal care aides, home health aides, registered nurses, nurturing assistants. Okay, where are we going to see deficits in the next five years? We are going to see deficits in registered nurses, right? No surprise, it's always a problem to get enough nurses, right? And we're going to see in New York City, we're going to need about twelve hundred more nurses than our degree programs are currently producing over the next five years. Personal care aides, there'll be a slight oversupply of them. And you can see also shortages in licenses, practical vocational nurses, nurse practitioners, basically if you have a kid and you can get him into a nursing program, they will have a job. And the job postings reflect that, we see a lot of ads for registered nurses right now in nursing assistants and medical assistants. And you can see some of the top employers here, right? Again, since you guys work in the sector, this probably won't be much of a surprise to you. But these are the organizations that are currently, or at least as of six twenty-two, have the most job ads out for healthcare occupations. Okay, typical education requirements and certifications, I'm going to skip this for time sake. Basic caregiving skills that are most needed in all healthcare occupations. Basic caregiving, food preparation, Spanish. These are all things, and I think, you know, particularly health is a great, great area to encourage our Hispanic speakers and other bilingual speakers, our Spanish speakers, not our Hispanic speakers, excuse me. And it's a great industry for them to go in because there is a demand for it. Most current healthcare workers live and work the most in Brooklyn. Overview of healthcare jobs typically requiring a high school diploma or less. Dave, how long do I have?
I don't want to, I don't want to rush you, Brian, so I want to make sure you cover everything that needs to be covered and we will, we can adjust.
Okay, feel free to give me like a five minute cutoff or something like that if I'm just blabbering on too long, so. So, okay, let's talk about high school jobs. Let's talk about healthcare jobs require less than a high school diploma. They're remarkably similar to the top growth jobs in that you've seen earlier, right? So personal care aides, home health aides, pharmacy technicians, healthcare and support workers. Again, you know, kind of as we'd expect for people without, people with a high school diploma or less. They're not the best wage jobs, but we've talked about the fact that, you know, all the things that we said before about why these jobs are still not necessarily bad jobs, right? And so we expect jobs requiring a high school diploma or less to grow more in New York City than in the United States as a whole. We expect over the next five years, those jobs to grow by almost fourteen percent. So there will be, continue to be demand for the occupations that you see right here, the specialty. Healthcare occupations requiring a high school diploma or less have grown at a faster rate in New York City than the nation. Again, we normalized this around two thousand eleven, so everything's in a hundred. The way to read this is that there are about eighty-five percent more high school, healthcare jobs that require a high school diploma or less than there were in two thousand eleven, right? These occupations have just exploded in New York City. Grown also throughout the state and the nation as well, but certainly not at the rate that we've seen in New York City. Caregiving and language skills are needed in these subsets of jobs. So what we're really looking for in these jobs that require less education is do you have basic caregiving skills? Are you able to take care of people who aren't able to take care of themselves, maybe? Fruit preparation, Spanish, again, very similar to the skills gaps that you saw for all occupations. Jobs care postings for healthcare jobs typically requiring a high school diploma or less. You can see that there are about, you know, at any given day, there are about fourteen hundred right now, job postings for these jobs. There are a lot of them for pharmacy technicians, for home health aides, personal care aides, matching up with some of the other data that we saw before, that the jobs where there are need, where there is high demand, employers are trying to hire in those areas. Again, you will probably realize better than even I can that these are the highest employers for healthcare jobs with less than a high school degree. And you can see, what are some of the skills that they need? CPT, CPR, having a driver's license, you know, CR, CST, and just all of these things that if you're in a training program for people with less than a high school diploma, it is not, it would be nice to sort of steer them to these to make them more qualified, as I'm sure that you already do. Healthcare jobs requiring more than a high school diploma but less than a bachelor's degree. So here we're talking about two-year degrees, associate's degrees, certification programs, that type of thing. The highest growth occupations for those over the next five years, right? Is our nursing assistants. You can see that there will be a lot of nursing assistants, almost twenty-five thousand needed over the next five years. Licensed and practice, licensed practical and licensed vocational nurses, do about ten thousand of those in demand. Medical assistance, dental assistance. Again, high demand for, really, over the next five years for all the ten occupations listed here. It's going, these occupations less than a bachelor's but more than a high school grow, are growing a little bit less quickly than in the nation as a whole. You can see that these jobs are about to grow by about four point five percent over the next five years. There are more healthcare jobs between high school and bachelors in New York City than the state and country. What this should read actually is that there is a higher, this is a higher rate of growth of these jobs. So you can see, we've grown about fourteen percent from two thousand eleven, these jobs have compared to ten percent in, that is, the United States and New York City. um compared to ten percent in that is the United States and New York City as a whole. Okay, um, what do we need the most of? We need those licensed practical and vocation vocational nurses. Um, they're going to be in the highest demand, and we're going to have the hardest time filling those jobs in the next um uh five years. You know, in general, and you all know this, right? Um, if if it has nursing in the title, it's hard to get a good one. Um, and we project that that will continue in the next five years. Um, um, there will be an oversupply of nursing assistants, which is interesting, right? Um, so thinking about, um, if you're thinking about workforce programs for the pandem- or for the recession that we believe is coming, um, thinking about what we can do with an oversupply of nerth- nursing assistance and how we can maybe level them up to other jobs uh would be a good idea. Um, deficit of technical skills, um Microsoft outlet, outlook, uh electrocardogram, uh Microsoft Office data entry, all of these things are becoming bigger parts of these um uh let uh high school to bachelor's um professions. And um uh, you know, technical skills are important uh in every job, it seems like these days, including in healthcare. Um, at any given time, uh by about June thirteenth, we were looking at about five thousand jobs in healthcare requiring between a high school and a bachelor's degree, right? Um, oh, forty-five hundred, forty-six hundred of them were nursing assistants when we took this data. Um, four thousand were medical assistants and so on down the line. Um, so top employers and skills needed in job postings. You can see again employers that I'm sure you recognize. And um some of the skills here that are necessary, uh again, mirroring what we saw in the skills gap uh slide just a little bit ago, electrocardogram, Microsoft Outlook, um and data entry, and Microsoft Excel and Microsoft Office. These are skills that for these people that have maybe a certificate um uh program that um that that have gotten a two-year degree. If they haven't picked up these skills yet, it should be a priority to get them those skills because it'll make them much more attractive for uh people who are applying uh for applying to those positions. Um, and that is it. Um, I moved really quick through the, through these things, so let me try to give some takeaways. I think that um the healthcare industry is strong in the um uh in New York City, uh it's probably a little stronger than it is uh throughout the nation even. And it's, healthcare is generally a pretty strong industry for us. Um, and um I think too that um where the job is, you know, it is good news for the types of people that um jobs first and its associated uh organizations work with. Because a lot of this job growth will come with the populations that you disproportionately work with. Um, and so those are the two big takeaways. Um, with that, I'm really happy to get into your questions. I can get into the uh chat. Um, and um, please, ask away.
And feel free to just unmute and jump in. Well, people are putting together thoughts, uh one question, Brian, uh so looking at data from previous recessions, different types. If in fact a recession does occur, what is your assessment of how that might affect the healthcare space?
So the first thing to say about the recession is this is not going to be two thousand twenty. Um, it's not even going to be two thousand eight, right? This will be throughout history, recessions are generally um pre- you know, involve a dip and don't involve a very long dip, um and I think that's what we're calling for right now. Um, so if you're worried that we're about to go into years of trouble, we do not believe that's going to be the case. Um, I believe that healthcare is going to be more resistant um to um the effects of a recession than other industries, um in part because the demand is just growing so quickly as we have an aging population. Um, and um, I think that um, you know, depending on what happens with insurance requirements and things like that, um I think there's reason to believe that, given a current policy environment, that um due to the aging of the population, the healthcare industry will do better in the recession than other industries.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, really quickly, um and look, first of all, uh, will you be able to share uh the PowerPoint? Uh, because that is a lot of information, great.
I I I sent it out before the meeting.
I did see that.
And if there's also a public folder on the drive, then it's, and we'll make sure you have a link to that.
Perfect, because I definitely think we can take this information and share with my team on just with all of the data that you, that you, that you uh shared. Thank you so much for that. Just in terms of out of school, out of work, uh sort of concentrations, I'm particularly uh interested in the Soundview area, that is one of the areas in the Bronx that that you lifted up on your map with the purple, and I just wanted to know if that you, did you see, do you see or foresee any um policies or initiatives coming down to specifically uh address some of those uh populations of, you know, again, out of school, out of um, out of work is is a population that we're particularly uh sensitive to, and we want it, uh we want it support. Um, but it is also hard to get there, right? I have a contract in Soundview, uh NDA contract, and it's, and it's leaving. They actually, uh, they, the D Y C D is not uh refunding it. So uh, I'm trying to think of i- in your position, have you heard of any policies or initiatives that's coming down the pipeline that could really uh maybe support this population?
Um, so I, sitting here in Richmond, Virginia, um, I am probably in a worse position to talk about the New York City um and New York State uh policies than some other people. Um, I think, um, you know, Carrie was throwing all kinds of stuff at me uh prior to this presentation. I have a feeling that she and Dave uh have a lot to say about that, too. Um, at the federal level, um, any jobs action that uh the Biden administration has pursued is largely stalled out. Um, so at least at the federal level, I don't see a lot of help coming um for the type of people um with which we work. And I wish I had a different answer than that.
I think that's.
Jody, it looked like you, yeah, I was gonna say, Jody, you look like you wanted to say something.
No, no, I think that's, I think that's accurate. I mean, I think, I think my, just sort of like, my reaction, I appreciate um uh the presentation, Brian, as it's helpful. I think my reaction, and this is by far not a critique, it's something that we at PHI deal with all the time. I think it it also is um um reflective of what's available for data, right? Um, and very often, on the, on the long-term care side in particular, there's an absence of data. So you're forced, and we are all the time too, right? This is the only data we have. Um, and so um, I think I'm sitting with that a little bit. I think the one thing that I um, I'm curious your reaction. I think part of what we talk about a lot is, the demand is clear, right? So if you think about the, the, and you think about labor economics, right? Like, the demand is absolutely clear. And the, the demographics of the labor force, um particularly for these entry-level jobs. Again, now, this is my world, right? So I'm, I'm talking only about the entry-level jobs, and that's often what's missing in the data, right? It's like, you know, the, the employers that are listing jobs are all big health systems. That's not actually necessarily where personal care aides and home health aides are getting employed, right? But so, so, and again, not a critique, it's just reality, that's all we have to call on. But so if we think about the labor force demographics and the fact that the traditional caregiver at an entry-level space is a, you know, a woman of a certain age, and the number of people that are entering the labor force that meet those demographics is dramatically falling. So I think there's just something for us as people who care about this um and who are trying to advocate around it, where it's, it can't be just demand-side focused. I mean, there's a, there's a supply-side problem, like a significant supply-side problem.
No, and there is, and I think that, I think in the short term, the supply-side problem is going to get better. Um, our position has been that sort of as uh stimulus funds run out um and um as conditions change, um that more people are going to want, are going to want or have to get back into the labor market. Um, I think, though, you point out some interesting long-term trends where labor force participation, for the first time for women, uh has started to fall. Um, and that is to what you said concerning, right? And, and now, part of labor force participation falling is the fact that we do have an aging population, and that aging population, you know, you're not just, you know, if you live to eighty years old and more people are living to eighty years old, it's going to shrink the percentage of people who are active in the workforce, unless you're a very rare eighty-year-old. Um, I'm certainly not going to be working when I'm eighty.
I hope I'm not either, for sure.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and so I do think there but in, but even there, right, that's increasing, you know, there's people who are living to eighty more is increasing the demand for healthcare workers. Um, and so, yes, I think there's some, I don't even know if they're medium-term, but there's some long-term um issues um with labor force participation that can affect growth across all industries um and in the industries that are growing fastest uh the most. And, and like, we are, we are, we are not in the macro policy business, no idea. Um, you know, we started to do a little literature. We'll actually have something coming on our blog about labor force participation um very soon. Um, and uh that will, um, that that may answer some questions.
When that blog is ready, Brian, could you give me Carrie, Megan, someone ahead?
Absolutely.
So the only thing, I I won't take up too much space here, but I think specific to New York, um, I feel like um, and those, and some of my Carrie, who's known me for a long time, knows that I beat the drum all the time, but um two, two pieces here. One is, I, I think from a policy perspective, the challenge for us here in New York is that the state has consistently taken the position where they don't mandate or, or oversee. E- even if we get something passed from a policy perspective, there is not oversight for that being implemented, right? That's one problem. So there's this three dollar, there's this three dollar increase that's going to happen over multiple years. But there's no corresponding increase in reimbursement rate for, you know, agencies, say, that are, are serving primarily Medicaid populations. So, you know, it's basically another way in which the state is, has taken a stance about consolidation of healthcare uh in, in across the board, whether it's, whether it's hospitals or whether it's home care agencies, or whether it's nursing homes, right? So I think that's the other thing, you know, so a three-dollar raise for this, for this direct care workforce doesn't mean anything if they don't have full-time hours, and it doesn't mean anything if, you know, the, the, there's not a wage pass-through, for example. Like in other states where we work, we achieve a wage pass-through, and the intention happens. Like, I think that is our challenge here in New York. Um, and I think that's going to continue. I think you're right that there's going to be a, uh, an oversupply of nursing assistants. I, my last, like, soapbox thing would be, like, as opposed to moving the nursing assistants into a higher role in the healthcare system, they're direct care workers, just like home health aides are. Why are we not making those jobs similar and raising the floor for both of those jobs and having them move in between the two?
Yeah.
So, that's, that's.
I had no reaction to it, it seemed like very good suggestions.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking more to my, yeah, as much to my colleagues here, too. I think that's, you know, like, that feels to me like our collective, as a network, our collective work is to, to think about some of these things. But I think you gave us good data to base some of that conversation on.
Great.
Thank you, Jody, and, and you kind of lead us into um, you know, the conversation that we always want to have after a data presentation like this. Um, because you lift up the point that there's a lot of things that workforce development providers know that the data collected can't tell us, right? There's the nuances of policy, job quality, um, things that you talk about that I frankly have no idea about. You know, like the, the enforcement of new legislation like that, and um, you know, what, what's the implications of that? Um, and what does it mean if, you know, your, your salary goes up or your hours go down? There's, you know, all of those, all of those things that are really important. And um, Brian, thank you for putting together such an a detailed presentation and going in depth about uh, you know, what's happening nationally and in New York in healthcare. And we will, you know, generate a set of questions um if people have, you know, well, maybe we could, can we find out something about this or that? Like, you know, a different set of employers, Jody, like you talked about. Um, you know, these are the largest employers in New York, but that's not necessarily the work, the niche work of workforce development agencies to partner with not the largest, but, you know, maybe the best, or maybe the, the ones that demand more of the role that you're training in. So, you know, is there, is there another question that we could ask and look into, um, see if there's data around? And so what I, what I would like to ask of uh those of you, you know, doing this work and, and listening is, what, what is missing in the data? You know, what, there are things in it that resonate with you, and then there are things that make you think about another question or something different, and, and something may not align with what you're saying. And Jody, you, you raised some of that, and I wonder for others. Um, we, we made space in the participant agenda for folks who like prefer to think on paper as opposed to saying it out loud. If you want to make some notes there, it would be really helpful. And you could do it, you know, now during the meeting, you could certainly come off mute and speak with us. Um, but if we gather it there, then we could go back to Chumora and say, hey, you know, is this something that you could get information on? Um, the group is wondering this, they have this follow-up question. So let me pause to see if there's anything more you want to ask out loud while we have Brian with us. Um, otherwise, feel free to put it on paper or in chat, and we can work with Brian and follow up on that.
And going along with that, if there's anything, not just where you're looking for additional information, but where what you've noticed is very different than some of the data seen, because of course, remember, there's always, except for things like job postings, which are very up-to-date. In most of the other types of data, there's a lag between, a significant lag between the most recently available high-quality apples-to-apples comparable data and the present. Uh, so that's why we're seeing a lot of data from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, even early twenty twenty-one. So COVID-specific years aside, we, there's always be lag, but coming later this year, the lags will decrease, the American勞力 survey this year will be better, so there will be, it'll be easier to get more recent good data later this year. I think that's fair, Brian, yes?
That's entirely fair, you know, it's unfortunately the time where we would most like good data. Um, you know, the pandemic uh disrupted data collection as much as it disrupted anything else. But um they're doing an admirable job uh at Bureau Labor Statistics and elsewhere, playing catch-up. So, and yeah, it, the lag time should really start to decrease. And I think too, um, you know, I might be signing off here in a second. Um, please, you know, funnel your questions through Dave um and Carrie. Um, also feel free to reach out to me, right? Um, I put, put my email in the chat. Um, we love talking about this stuff, and we love helping people use it to make decisions. Um, but um, um, please, um, let me know uh how I can help.
Wonderful, thank you, Brian, yes, um, we, feel free to leave, stay up to you. Um, the next portion of the meeting is really to go over the um go more in-depth in the jobs for a partnership development process, and uh we are recording this meeting. And so we can share that with um you, others on your team, um, and the other healthcare partners that had to leave um following the meeting. And we'll also be scheduling, I've met with some of you one-on-one um to talk more about this, and we'll continue scheduling time with each of you uh to do that. But for now, thank you, Brian, uh, appreciate um, yeah, that's the time you took uh to put that together and present it to our group here.
Absolutely, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
And Dave, I will pull up the slides and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Karen.
Let's see.
So, as.
So as Carrie mentioned and as. And loosely started talking about this last, uh, meeting, although couldn't make that meeting. Going to be talking about jobs first process, the. Process of, uh, developing this network further. So as you know, jobs first, or some of you may not know, jobs first is working on several different sector networks at the moment. Besides this in green economy and tech, obviously very different industries. But in all of them, trying to figure out, okay, how do we expand skills training? How do we strengthen those collective mechanisms? How do we ensure that we're meeting hiring demands, especially as say, hiring demands change? And importantly, increasing quality and quantity of employment opportunities for young adults and all ages, really. So we're going to go into talking about the process itself. So some of you may have seen this, so we have a, what we call the five eyes. We investigate, listen and learn. We imagine bringing communities, stakeholders, all of the key players together to think about new solutions or. Expanding on existing solutions that might exist elsewhere and improving those. Incubating, meaning taking together our ideas, our plans, our systems that we. Come up with together and actually starting to create some really firm things that we can use. Implementation, exactly what it sounds like, actually putting all of that into action. And then integration, do you anything about? Making what we have done bigger and better. How do we refine it? How do we scale it? How do we, uh, export it? If we always good when people steal, uh, good ideas and copy them elsewhere. So that's, that's the very high level overview. Uh, and it's processed during by core values, people first, the idea that. People have great ideas and we just need to untap them. And part of that is the idea of bold ideas, not just going with incremental changes, but. Really trying to do something transformative. Collective genius, just that, the whole reason that we're doing this as a partnership or a network or anything else is because people can. Complement each other's services, help build in on each other's ideas. And objectivity, just that, you know, we start with making sure that we, we know the data, we know the systems. And we're acting, uh, really in a systematic way that works well long term. So the, this leads to our impact framework. Not going to read through all of this, but really it's about thinking about how to have an inclusive change process that brings people together to make things happen. In a meaningful way, uh, that means that people are involved in in the very real sense of individuals in a community of. Getting senses of, say, what are the, what is the demographic data tell us? So everything from, uh, small scale to large scale, understanding of people and how we're working with them. The institutions, which can mean anything, right here, listing CBOs and academia, but that's everything. Those, that was the workforce developers, the companies, government agencies, anyone that's really a key role in that area. And then how do we tap into and strengthen or create partnerships? Because everything, everything that we do is about partnerships. Uh, and systems is really thinking about what the bigger picture again, when we. Have an existing partnership, how has it changed conditions? Or when we create a new partnership, how do we want that to change conditions? When we measure it, we'll see what conditions have changed. So, again, very high level. If we can, perfect. So this is our sort of. Sketch for the timeline of the roadmap of this process. Again, none of this is fixed in stone, especially because things like covid tend to interfere with timelines. But, you know, right now, we. Are just heard and in over the next month, we can think about, uh, and process and ask questions on the data. In later in the summer, thinking about the. Uh, asset infrastructure, right? Assets in the very loose sense of the term, what are the? Public assets out there provided by New York City and New York State in terms of. Programs, in terms of laws, in terms of. The different entities that might be useful to have in conversation. So broad picture, looking at assets. Not, not going to read through all of this, uh, but it's really again, thinking about those five eyes, thinking about, okay, we're gathering. Information, we're planning out how to use information connections, systems. And then we're turning that into implementation. So fingers crossed next spring. This again, a little more of a deeper dive into this, thinking about, okay, what is the data that we have? The data that we don't have a need to get. Once we get it, analyzing it, thinking about what that tells us. Whether it tells us informs about individually what we're doing and could do. And then collectively, what we as a, a network, uh, can do and should do. Same thing with the assets, right? We need to understand what's available before we can start to think about what we want to. Create, expand, refine, et cetera. And that continues with each of these different steps. It's thinking first about what exists, what could exist. And what we need to do to make us get from where we are to where we could be. The logic model and theory of change, very important part of that. Uh, and then finally setting up that, that network governance. So we have something sustainable and something that actually implements what we're trying to do. And then we, we implement it with a, uh, two to three year plan. Thinking about this in terms of other partnerships, as always, we try to identify key players, key stakeholders. In every sense of that, individual and institutional. We always use our five step process. Again, we just discussed the roadmap that we use for going through this. The theory of change, just thinking about what it is that we want to accomplish both concretely and.
Sorry, I'm using two screens and my mouse is being jumpy.
Technology is fickle. So, yes, thinking about the sustainability model so that we actually have something that isn't dependent on any just. Few, uh, individuals in our work, but really something that can survive through any kind of change. And more importantly, is something that outsiders from this network. Will see and be like, oh, right, there's this entity, this healthcare network. That should be thought of and addressed as such, which makes it easier when we're thinking about. Talking with government agencies as a block, talking with companies as a block. Uh, and of course, as part of this process, jobs first helps to raise and leverage resources, fundraising. To support everything that we plan and everything that is part of this overall process.
And maybe get as lucky as PHI to get noticed by. I'm going to say that every meeting we have, Jody.
It's true, it's true, it's a blessing. It's like cursed, but I'm not going to say that. It's not fair for me to say that, but.
I know, I'm sure. It's like saying your vacation was exhausting.
So the next several slides, you know, it's, uh, long screen, but really it's just to give some more insight into the partnership development process. So investigate, it's all about learning, it's learning the data, the problems, the players, the potential and more. Really just thinking about what is, what is going on, what is here right now? So that we can then be well informed enough to figure out the next steps. Uh, and that comes through things like conducting baseline, uh, data analysis and reviewing. Labor market conditions like we did today. Example. And again, really next steps after that is thinking about, okay, how do we get more data from stakeholders? How do we get more data from job seekers or people already employed, but trying to. Upscale or reskill within healthcare or move from industry into healthcare. What are thinking about the stakeholders who. May not be involved in health at all, but have a significant population that, uh, may be involved. Common example that always comes to mind for me is NITIA that. Not in any of these industries, but always has a large group that might be involved in certain industry. So imagine is just that, imagining what could be defining the process, identifying gaps and opportunities. Gathering and developing ideas, facilitating internal and external sessions. So really taking all of the information that we've learned and figuring out, okay, what can we? Build, create, do with all of this information, uh, all of these perspectives that we've gathered. So yes, design that was actually a good, a good, uh, way of thinking about that. And yes, I said lots, the most important one here is, but last one, aligning and designing the approaches, right? Just creating the approach, the system, the plan for what is, what is it that we're actually going to do? After we've done all this discussion and learning and gathering. And then arguably, the most, uh, second most exciting part, uh, incubating when we start to actually. Build these things. So we've gathered the information, we've thought about what we want to create. Now we are creating, creating the governance structures and creating asset maps and identifying. The key stakeholders who we want to bring in or activate or in some way, uh, engage more. And then facilitating. Provision of maybe whatever we already discussed, if we're getting, say, additional newer data or. Finding that something has changed because of, say, a change in the economy, whatever it might be. To make sure that we're up to date. Then getting that gun structure, uh, process started. Identifying the actual resources that we might need to with these new things that we're creating or about to create. And, uh, setting up a budget, of course, so that we can start that fundraising process. So won't go too much more into that, but get that it, we're trying to. Go from the process of thinking to creating and then implementation, clearly the most exciting when we've taken. All of these things that we've developed and we're actually making it happen. We are, uh, implementing our tools, our system, information, relationships. Putting them into action, we are making the. The enhanced skills training, the better connections from job seekers to employers, the. Leveraging the network's collective voice, all of those things we are now putting into place. And then, as of course, as mentioned earlier, integrated phase is really this continued and enhanced, right? Taking this, refining it, thinking about how to, uh, make it bigger and better. Uh, so I'll pause there because I did a lot of, uh, talking, uh, but want to open it up to. Immediate, if anyone has any burning questions, and then we're going to do a bit of a structured discussion around this. And I'm going to drop once again the participant agenda into the chat, uh, which. Has some of this, uh, consolidated also spot for people to put in, for people for, uh. Writing in questions, thoughts, et cetera, uh, space for that. If there are no immediate burning questions, one thing to think about is what, what feels directionally right about this process? What major things might be missing? What, uh, how does this feel in terms of the work that you imagine us doing together?
I'll just, I'm going to say that, like, for me, the process feels, uh, paced well. From my, from my perspective, because I feel like I'm not. Our college is not fully like in this space yet. We're still learning so much from every one of these conversations about what's out there and how to connect. So the idea that there's this process of, um, sort of digging up the data and learning about each other. Like as the precursor to developing how to make those connections and how to move into like, you know, what the projects might look like. That that feels very right to me.
That's good to hear, Nisha. Um, affirmation is always great. Thank you. Uh, I just dropped a link in chat that takes you like to the specific spot in the participant agenda where we made some space. To react, respond, give us some feedback. I think not too far above that, you'll see blank space. For any questions for Chumora, so I just want to point that out in case you didn't know specifically where that was from our earlier conversation. But yeah, let's, let's just talk, we have a small group here and, um, you know, any questions? I know it's a lot between the data. It was, it was too kind of word heavy, text heavy. Yeah, we probably broke all the PowerPoint rules of don't put too much on the slide. So forgive us. For us, it's, you know, it was a place to have everything because we do PDF it and share it with you. So you can go back and look at everything full screen on your own screen if you, if you want to. Um, and we share it out with all the, all the folks who were invited to this meeting, so it's, it's our record too. So forgive the wordiness. But please, um, you know, let us know any thoughts of like, uh, anything from, I don't know what you're talking about too. I'm in, I want to, I want to be part of this and I want to, I want to change the healthcare system in New York City.
And I always love the, I don't know what you're talking about questions, because I always presume that whenever one person has that question, a bunch of other people have that question.
I mean, I think for me, I, I mean, I share the, the sense about pace. I think that's right. It feels the same way to me, I. I guess I'm just sitting with the sense of opportunity for us as a network. To. Not, you know, collaborates and overused word to be frank, but, um, but I do think that, you know. I think you, you have done a good job of thinking about who to bring together into this network. And hopefully we can then make sure that the perspectives of the, of the multiple layers. Of the system are represented and working together, like, I don't. I think for all of us, I, I know for myself, I don't ever feel like we're, uh, any of us are at odds with each other. I think we're just in our lanes. And so if, if you all play a role of being like, yes, that's your lane and I appreciate that feedback and here's how it relates. With these other lanes, I think that would be a true success for the network. Um, and I know you're doing that in, in other industries, so, you know, for me, I just feel. Good about the opportunity to, to do that.
Thank you. That's, that's really good to hear, Jody. And to your point, you know, there's lots of influencers in this space that we don't know. Where we, Jobs Force doesn't work in the healthcare space, right? We are the convener, we make, we make neutral spaces for people who think they might be competitors, but really probably aren't to collaborate. So please, each of you, um, we will ask this over and over, like, take a moment in the, that third column in the table there to say like, who are major actors, stakeholders, missing from the room? Or maybe, you know, they don't need to sit in this room, but we need to talk to them. And one thing I do want to note, uh, Jody, to your point of you saying, you know, I think you said something about like. I don't know exactly how you said it, but I, I, we hear this a lot, like the time is now, like there's. We're in this kind of inflection point with everything, right? The, the earth, but let's go smaller right now to, you know, right here and now where. We saw this, um, we've been coming together with the Green Economy Network for a long time. And you'll see, you know, we kind of put things in an order that makes sense at the moment when you're developing a plan. But something happens where you need to prioritize something that might have been later in the plan. And that happened with the green economy. Relative to making policy recommendations. Um, and you know, that may be the case here in healthcare too, because something important is happening. We need to get to some, um, political folks, some influencers there, uh, to, to say, you know, before this legislation comes forward. We make these recommendations, it would require this sort of investment, you need to put this in that budget. You need to make sure there's workforce development carve out dollars in some plan for an investment in something else, you know? I don't know what that might be, but that, that happened with the green economy, right? There's all these infrastructure investments coming, but does anyone put specific money in for workforce development to make sure? People in the communities that are most affected by climate change and disasters are also benefiting from investments in workforce development. Usually not, right? So the Green Economy Network. Came together before, right before the Adams administration was coming in. To put together a set of policy proposals to put in front of the administration and say, you know, this is what we recommend. to put together a set of policy proposals to put in front of the administration and say, you know, this is what we recommend. So things like that, you know, that's important. And you all will guide us, like we won't necessarily be on top of everything help that happening in healthcare. So we will look to you.
So one thing you said that just like ticked off like an idea when you were asking us to look at the partners and see like, are there other stakeholders here that may be in the room is, and, and thinking about that last question, like, are we doing the right things to engage in the right way with folks that are, you know, need to make these connections and, and, and entry points? I was thinking about, like you brought, brought, was it 110 is the name of the organization you brought? I think there's like a whole sort of suite of organizations of this type that might be really good to be real partners, like maybe a little more engaged than like share. And then we think about them. I don't know if it's, that they're already considered like a real inside partner. But like, there's a whole set of folks that do this connection to the labor market for CUNY. So Braven is one, Europe, America Needs You, Co-op. So I'm thinking of maybe some of those, I don't, and maybe it's like reviewing that with the, the healthcare lens, like are they right? Cause I know some of them are maybe more industry focused and maybe it's not totally healthcare. But when I think about the, the presentations you've brought to the table around, oh, what was it? Memorial Sloan Kettering, I forget what.
Yes, Memorial Sloan Kettering.
There was such a variety of entry points, right? It's not just like the more traditional things you think about in healthcare. And so really it could be accessing like a pretty broad range of those types of organizations. So that's one thing I thought of. The other thing I thought is, you know, there's this whole thing going on with New York CEO Job Council, which is, you know, that, that whole.
The Job CEO Council, yes.
Yeah. And I think of that type, I can see the struggle there, even though it's a great possible sort of big step in a better direction. They continue to struggle from my perspective to actually ensure that the entry points that those corporations are trying to offer to CUNY students actually lead somewhere. Yeah, I see some head shaking. So that's what I feel like they've, they've shifted one or two pieces of the entryway. But they're not finding that those companies then open to a job offer or open to mobility in the way that we think there was a hope. And I might be speaking out of term, we should talk to people or do running the thing, but that's my sense.
You mean like advancement? Like there people are, yeah. And just a, a Marjorie, looks like you had some information.
Oh, I was just saying, Nisha, it's okay to speak openly here. I actually read all that information because we've, we've been asking around when, before the last before Gail left. She shares some of that information with us and I know we're, we're, we're trying to figure out well Karen knows more about this with the conversation we've been trying to have between them and 110. Trying to run 10 as a platform. You put your resumes out there. It's actually a public now that, you know, it matches stuff for you. I think they were trying to work with some of those companies to figure out something on the community side, but I'm not going to speak out of terms because I don't know what that guy. But yeah, there are some issues around the connection to the entry level. And there's some issues around progress, progress after that entry level. So, I, yeah.
Yeah. And something this group could help inform too, because so I, I have actually very recent information from partners at 110, that 110 and the job CEO, 110 and the job CEO council have been speaking all along. 110 is national. They know about the other, there's overlapping of some of the employers. And they are, they've been needing to try and figure out, you know, how they work more collaboratively in New York together. Especially since there's, you know, some, at least nine employers that are in both of those coalitions. But to your point, Nisha, I think, you know, I, I've been having this conversation with our tech partners because a lot of the jobs through 110 are tech related. And there's still a disconnect, right? And, and you know, they're training people who are right for a lot of the jobs. But the employers, and this is please keep, you know, let's keep this very safe here. The employers are still not doing a good job of getting us job descriptions, writing the job descriptions in a way that the language, like I, we're always coming back with questions to the job description of I'm actually developing a set of them to somehow get 110 to get to all of the employers to say, like, if you want good talent matching to happen with the partners that we work with, I'm not just talking about the general public college going folks that you're used to recruiting from. But you need to answer these other things, like what's the reporting structure? What's the onboarding structure? What's all these things that we need to know to say? This person wouldn't be a good match for that environment. And this person would be a good match for that environment. And I'm sure there's a lot of those same things in healthcare. And then also the conversation around what is the culture shift work that's happening on the employer side to make it a space where these folks can work and advance? And then how can we as a network, this is one of the things I think about a lot. And I know Jody, we've had conversations about this. It doesn't always apply to every position or every person, but what is the advancement strategy? Whether it's within the same role, making it better? Or it's a ladder up for the person who wants that ladder up and, and how as a workforce development sector fields, can we be doing more of that? I think we're really good at the entry point. I don't know that we've successfully thought about that advancement strategy too. And that's something I, I would love to see as a network goal.
I think in, in like it's, it's, it can't be surprising, right? Stomach and equity lives in the labor market. And so it's like not, it's not a simple solution. It's like an engaged, long-term solution. So I think about some of those potential partners who would help. You know, you know, you all sort of as the leaders are helping with that sort of core goal or set, set of goals, but maybe some or the other organizations that might, that have done this work nationally or locally and can help keep that on the, the sort of front burner. The other thing I was wondering about, like if, if there is a representative from CUNY Central or other higher education institutions that might be involved, and maybe that's already been tried, but yes.
Well, they had turnover there too, twice in a year, right? It was Angie, then it was Brandy. And we, we reached out to the new person and I, I haven't connected. So if anyone is connected to them and wants to nudge, I'm, I'm happy to.
It's been a lot of transition from my perspective as well. But I am connected to Lauren Anderson, who's the new person that's sitting there. And I will mention it to her. I think I'm having a conversation within the next couple of weeks with her and I can mention it and see, because it may be that whatever the, the shuffle has happened, like she might not have been with, but if there's some representative who can stay in the conversation and keep this coming back to them. Or somebody, you know, maybe a couple of other CUNY folks from the campuses that just keep a little bit more of a broad CUNY connection could, could be helpful. So anyway, those are some of the thoughts I had about people to maybe bring in the room.
Great.
So Karen, um, there is a core group, which is this group that we're meeting with. And then the extended group will be the other folks that get invited to the conversation.
Yeah. Based on, you know, your recommendations here from this group of, but it could be both, you know, on, well, it could be any of the stakeholders we've mentioned, right? Government, other CUNY partners, other workforce development partners, employers that you think are engaged in this way and interested in this conversation. I think particularly ones that are having a really hard time finding talent might be interested in, in being a part of the conversation, even if it's on a select times, you know, moments in time basis. So, you know, think about it. We will share a link to a feedback form also. You could put it in there if you didn't put it in the participant agenda and be as lengthy as you want with that list. And we will, you know, do the research and explore and ask you for introductions if that's relevant.
Also, Karen, once the network gets announced publicly, there are people that will call and I want to sign up for it anyways, that group will get bigger.
Yeah. I mean, to that point, I, I wondered, and again, you know, sort of invoking that this is a safe space for folks to react. Have you, have you all thought about, about NYACH, right? And the city and because NYACH is really the city, even though it's supposedly a public private partnership. It's even more the city now than it was before. From my perspective, but so, but I do think, I think you're right, Marjorie, right? Like if this gets announced, I can imagine Daniel calling me up and being like, or calling you up and being like.
Nobody, nobody reached out to us. Yes.
Yeah. So it's just, that's just a matter of strategic, political, like how do we manage it more than anything else I would just raise.
Yeah. Thank you. The Green Economy Network has all those range of people from government, from the mayor's office. They're involved in it. So you're right. I think you know, when Shawna left, I just never stayed close to connect to that. She laughed. So, but yeah, I think we'll.
I just talked to her, like, this is like totally aside. Sorry, guys. I just talked to her like 10 days ago.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. She's doing great. Um, but yeah, so I mean, we ended up, I ended up, I should say, I ended up sort of more connected to them through the crisis part of the pandemic. But so I have a little bit of a connection, but I just, I think that will get raised is all I'm saying.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah. And Jody, I'll connect with you. You could, you could tell me a little bit more about it because I haven't been, same as Marjorie since Shawna left.
So want to move to our next steps, closing process. So I'm going to put a link in chat for a feedback form. Was to take a couple of minutes to fill that out now. Just, I know already out of the participant agenda for some of the other questions, but this specifically this form is going to help to inform the upcoming meetings about putting more flesh on the bones of the process and roadmap that we described earlier. If anyone has any trouble accessing the form, let me know, but should be very standard one. And we're going to, as I said earlier, going to move into thinking about data that we already have, what additional questions we need to answer and what additional players we need to have in this space so that we can do a good job of identifying and imagining before we get to the incubating phase. So let's see, something saying that's an issue with that form.
I could work on that if you want to.
See, I see on my end, it's working, but we, we've been having technology issues today.
There's a weird place in forms that you have to make it like open to everyone. I'll see if I could play with it while you're finishing.
Clicked on the link from the original form that you gave us that worked.
Okay.
You want to go that direction.
I will share that then.
Let's see. And as said, if there's anything that isn't in the participant agenda or isn't in the feedback form that you're like, this is something key to think about, or anything where it's like, hey, it would actually be much better to do a, share my thoughts or questions or anything else by phone. We're happy to set up a call. And of course, as Brian mentioned, if there's any additional data or different types of data that you want from Chumora or some other kind of information that Chumora might not have, but that we're able to find, we're also, we can look at some of the more recent, also more volatile statistical data from say, the New York Department of Labor. So on both sides, just thinking about what information we should be looking at collectively and what questions you have. And any place where the perspectives that you're seeing in day-to-day real life don't match up with what you're seeing in big picture data or the older 2021, 2020 data. That's also a good perspective for us to have so that we can use that to inform our upcoming roadmap.
Did that, did the second link in the chat work for everyone to get the form? Oh, I didn't send it to everyone.
I was gonna say, I don't have it. Yep.
There you go. I, I was in like a direct message to Dave or somebody. Okay, it's there now. Just let us know if that does not work.
No, it worked.
Oh, perfect. Okay. All right. Um, well, if you want to take the, the last five minutes or Dave, sorry, I, if you had something else to say, I don't want to cut you off.
No, just wanted to make sure that if there are any last questions, thoughts, suggestions that people were ruminating on earlier and didn't get to share and want to share with the group that people get the space to do that. And of course, people, there are very large variety of resources mentioned. Totally feel free to put those in the participant agenda, but if there's anything like, oh, I need to drop this in the chat for everyone to go check this out. Please do.
All right. Well, thank you all. If, yeah, just take a few minutes, fill in that form and you know, in follow-up, we will give you some overview of this meeting and links to the resources and the public folder with slides and all of that great stuff. Thank you for your time and your brain power. We really appreciate it. And we will be seeing you in follow-up and again in July.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Enjoy your long weekend.
Take care.